Okay, we do actually have county commissioner business tonight. And we'll call that to order, and then we have the election of officers. I'd like to nominate Jim to be chair. Somebody want a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're on.
Announcements, Libby? We have one announcement.
Do we?
Oh, we need to, I'm sorry, I'll take nominations for a vice chair. Who would like to serve as vice chair? It's a very, it's a very tough job.
It's a very tough job, so I'll nominate Rita.
Second.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, no. Welcome Rita. And is there any public comment to come before the county commission tonight? Next item is approval of minutes of March 29th and payroll and treasury warrants for April. Any comments on the minutes? Hearing none, we will take those as approved. Are there any commissioner reports or comments from us this evening? Hearing none, I make a motion for a German.
Second.
Is there a second?
So move.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Turn it over to you.
Okay. Well, we'll accept the agenda if no one has any objections or changes. And announcements, Libby?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This meeting is being video and audio recorded in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law. We have a number of committee, board, and commission vacancies coming up for 2017, and we have listed them all up here on the screen. They're also online. There's a lot of information online if people are interested in serving in some capacity in town government. We encourage them to take a look at the town website and see what you might want to apply for. We have our ongoing announcement about the Wanna Comet Water Company water main replacement project, which is taking place in the Prospect Street area. And as we know, the roadway on Prospect Street is very difficult right now, and I think that everyone is trying to do their best to get that road into decent shape. We had a setback with the asphalt plant breakdown a week or so ago, and I don't know if the water company manager, he's still here. Sort of.
I'm not sure we can get any unluckier with the rain, but there's no question that it's an adventure going through Prospect Street with the trenches, and it really, last Thursday, the whole project was meant to be paved. Trenches were prepped, and when you prep a trench, you take the compacted material out so you can put asphalt in, and the plant broke down. So we, and then it rained. So we've been, it's been a real struggle for the contractor to get, keep them passable. Tomorrow morning, paving is starting, and we'll go into Friday. Please don't, we can't just take too much more rain. So we thank everyone for their patience. It's been a struggle, but hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow or Friday morning at the latest, that the temporary paving will be done and be passable once again. But other than, we're still on schedule to be finished by the end of, end of May for the entire project, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. We also have an announcement relating to DPW. We have a proclamation for Arbor Day, which if somebody could, I could read it, or one of you maybe could read it?
Sure. Proclamation is, whereas the National Arbor Day Foundation has declared April 28th, 2017, as Arbor Day, and whereas the citizens of Nantucket recognize the important historic, environmental, and aesthetic qualities which trees provide, and whereas the Board of Selectmen support the protection, preservation, and propagation of all town-owned trees, and whereas the Town of Nantucket desires to enhance awareness of Arbor Day on the island community. Now therefore, in recognition of the important role trees play in preserving our unique island heritage, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Nantucket, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2017, as Arbor Day on Nantucket.
Thank you. Were you gonna say something?
Motion.
No, no, I don't think, I don't think so. But also, there's a seedling giveaway this Saturday, April 29th, and on Sunday, April 30th, from 8:00 AM to noon at The Landfill. And that's a great place to get free stuff. That's it, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Is there any public comment to come before us tonight? Anything that's not already on our agenda? Hearing none, any new business? Hearing none. Approval of minutes, warrants, impending contracts? There's no objections or changes to the minutes?
No. Good.
Or the warrants? We'll adopt those by unanimous consent. Payroll warrants and treasury warrants. And then approval of the pending contracts?
Thank you. We have just two tonight. One is a memorandum of understanding with town administration and the Sewer Enterprise Department and Wanna Comet Water, $120,000. This is to repair a sewer line in Farmer Street, and this is a coordinated effort between Wanna Comet and the Sewer Department to do two projects at one time, which I think everybody will want to see, and thank the water company for stepping forward to help facilitate this project. Funding is available from the Sewer Enterprise Fund Capital Project, one of the capital projects approved at the 2017 Annual Town Meeting. We also have a contract amendment for town administration and DPW with Mass DOT, and this is simply extending our Chapter 90 agreement through 2027. I guess it's 10-year increments now, these contracts. So it's, it's a routine matter that all municipalities will be signing.
Okay. Any questions, comments? And a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Citizen departmental request, request for reappointment of constable for a three-year term.
Move approval?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Committee appointments, Historic District Commission alternate, I believe the applicant is here. I don't know if you want to introduce yourself, TJ?
I'm TJ Waterson, and I'd be honored to receive your appointment as the alternate member on the HTC.
Thank you. Everyone has his application.
Yeah, we're qualified.
Question, comment, motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for serving. National Grid, request for waiver from the noise bylaw.
This came forward, right now National Grid is doing some investigative work on some conduits, and they came upon some areas up in the steamship area where this is, and to avoid all the truck traffic, they'd like to do the work at night, so it would be after 10, going through the early morning of the next day. So they're shooting from May 3rd into May 4th, with the rain date of May 10th into May 11th.
It sounds like something that's necessary, but we were just hoping to ask that the neighbors that actually reside there be notified.
We can make that, we can make that a requirement.
They're not surprised.
Move approval with that, that suggestion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now, number four, request to license, for a license to allow a driveway in the public road layout at 8 Cornish Street.
Madam Chairman, there is some information in your packet, some background on this. The requestor is here, I think they probably would like to speak on it, and if you need any comment from town administration, I think Erica is our person.
Hello?
Hi, my name's David Moore, and I'm a co-owner with my son of the house at 8 Cornish Street. And first off, I'd like to thank you very much for considering this request, and I also would like to thank Erica Mooney, who sat with me very graciously and went over things when I came down to ask to be put on the schedule. In briefly, as you can see from what we wrote up, the driveway that we put at 8 Cornish Street exits on Swain, not on 8 Cornish. I did take pictures in both directions. I discovered, can we go back one slide, two slides, right there? The one, that one, shows the yellow guy wire, which National Grid has to the pole. It's 39 inches from the post to the outside of the guy wire, and it leaves less than 10 feet actually between that and the edge of the house. It becomes a very narrow thing. We had originally, that was the way it was put on the HTC request, and when we got there and saw it, and we were really more concerned with the, making sure that we were less non-conforming, because the original house that was there was very non-conforming, and this is less. So we duplicated, as you can see from that picture, the driveway adjacent, as the same it was as the adjacent property, the Robinsons. And so when it came to getting a sign-off with Mr. Butler, we discovered that we were in violation, so to speak, and that it was a mistake. And so we have asked if we could get a license so that we could do this. There were a couple of issues. One was the width between the guy wire from the light pole and the house, and the second issue is the fact that that driveway right there is three feet from the corner, and we learned from the planning department that they don't like a driveway within 25 feet of the corner. The way we have it here, it's about 15 feet from the corner, so we're still closer to the corner, but it allows us to see both ways on Swain Street as we come out of the driveway, whereas the other driveway, you're right on the corner and you've got three streets coming together, two parts of Swain and one of Cornish Street itself.
Okay. Thank you. Erica, did you want to make any comments on the application?
Well, I would, I did prepare a summary, which was in your packet, with some exhibits that outlined some of the issues here. So originally, you can see that there was an on-street, or an off-street parking space on the property before the property was reconfigured, which is here. And then when they went to the zoning board of appeals to get permission to construct this new dwelling, the application did show a 7-by-20 parking space on the exit, on their site, within their, their private property. But then when they went to go get their CO, the Asbelt showed that there, the, pretty much I would say 80, 85% of the driveway is within the public right-of-way, and so they are requesting a license for that. However, even if you grant a license, they're still going to need to get zoning board of appeals sign-off because of the distance on either end where the location is. It's just a really tough corner. We at town administration are actually not recommending granting a license. Unfortunately, it would just really open a Pandora's Box with other encroachment issues, like we have this around the island that we are currently now trying to get a handle on. And one idea that we did have was possibly, in this area here, which is all within the town right-of-way, is potentially creating some on-street parking. So it's really your call, but where you can see here, unfortunately, all this hedging on both sides is within the town right-of-way. The town's property line goes about right here, so the part that's on their property is only this top part. And you can see here as well, the guy wire is completely within the town right-of-way. That's actually been moved once. I checked with Verizon, and they do have a work order on that, that it's already been moved, because it used to be further in, and that is completely within the right-of-way. But you can see clearly how far the driveways are out into town-owned property.
And can the guy wire be moved again?
That would, potentially, but that would be a question for Verizon. They've already moved it once, and again, they're within the town's property, so would the town want it moved? I don't, that's, again, not sure.
Were you wanting to ask a question or?
They did move it once. We had asked them if they could take it down, because it's really not, it's not really supporting much. Our wire goes down underground. The other thing is it's 113 inches, or nine feet, four inches, five inches from the edge of the house. The actual length from the edge of the street, which was not disturbed, is 17 feet. And the, so there's about, and the house, you know, we have 10 feet, it works out to be about eight feet of the driveways, or nine feet of the driveways on our land, and the remainder and the cobblestone apron is on the town land.
Yeah, I think we have to be careful about the precedent. I mean, this is, unfortunately, this is a situation that has cropped up all over the island, and we're slowly trying to correct them. And so it's, you know, we have to be careful, I think, about, you know, sort of giving the incentive that, oh, you know, we'll license anything, it'll be fine. So I think that's part of what the board has to be grapple with here.
Yeah, a lot of, what I've seen for licenses before is like stairways on existing homes in the old Historic District where people need to pass in and out of their house, and, you know, maybe licensing to cross-town property to get into your driveway, but this would create a situation where a car would be sort of permanently on, on the town property, as well as a number of landscaping elements that have been added, that will need to be moved in. But, and this is a recently built house, as is that there's an issue with the neighboring house as well. That was not done with proper permitting.
And that's something we're going to address.
So I know that a lot of places in Brant Point do have parking along the street. I don't think, I think in this location, you're even required to have a permit. I mean, not, not that they're, it's dedicated spaces, but there's street parking, it's not within the two-hour zone. So it just might be a way to allow parking that could be for them or for others, but it would help function.
I had a question. How close is the existing house to the right-of-way?
To Cornish or to Swain?
This picture here.
From the drive.
On this side, from the edge of the house to the right-of-way.
To the, to the roadway?
No, the right-of-way, not the roadway.
10 feet.
And nine and a half to the guy wire? You were saying?
Yes.
Okay.
My problem being that if you drive in, you can't, we have a Honda Pilot, and I've measured the width, so we can't open the door, the driver can't open the door when you get in beside it. The other thing, to be honest with you, was that on the previous house, the driveway was at least five feet further towards the building, because the building was of a different shape. And the distance from the corner, instead of being less than three feet, was about eight feet. So backing out and backing in, or driving in, was not as much of a problem. As it would, as it would be if we had followed the actual HTC plan that we had presented.
So whether we approve the license or not, it still has to go to zoning or planning, and it's not going to help or hurt? It's more of their decision? It's kind of a question?
Well, it's for a different piece of it. It's for the, the distance from the corner, not, not really anything to do with the town Now, it looks like on your original drawings here, when you designed the new house, that the parking space was proposed as 7-by-20?
Yes.
Which is for a compact?
Yes.
Car space.
Correct.
Okay. So in its, in that configuration, it would probably fit a vehicle of a different size?
Yes, a small vehicle, yes.
And if the guy wire wasn't there, you would have 10 feet?
We'd have, yes, more room, correct.
Which would be enough for doors to open?
Yes. It wouldn't correct the fact that we back into the, back out into a three-way corner, but, not a corner, but an intersection.
Yeah.
I'm not so, I'm not as concerned about the intersection there, it's not a busy intersection. And I'm not as concerned about the, you know, the five feet or the seven feet and all that. I think that part is, is relatively okay. That's up to the planning, but, you know, it isn't five corners, you know? But I do, I am concerned about the precedent that we're setting.
I think there's a lot of the driveway in the public way. It's not a matter of two feet. It's most of the driveway, or the parking area.
We have found that Cornish is a busy street. People coming down Swain turn to Cornish to get directly to east, to avoid going first onto North Beach and then, uh, North Water and then down. Not North Beach, excuse me, wrong word.
I, I as well am worried about the precedent. I, I think that it, it, I completely sympathize with your situation, but at the same time, this house just got built and just got planned this way, when there were alternatives to make a car fit better. And there's just no way for us to say to anyone who wants to now put a parking space on town property that they can't do it.
Yes, we had some list of.
It's just, I don't know how to get around that.
And I think from the president's standpoint, we're going to see more of this. When you look at what's happening sort of down on Washington Street, off of Union, all of those lots are being, the old buildings are being renovated or torn down, and they're being maximized. And I'm wondering where all the cars for those houses are going to go, and I think we're going to see a lot of these situations, just in that area alone, just because of the pressures that are happening there. You know, and that doesn't change what's happened here, but I just, yeah, and I support the town's recommendation, you know, not to allow it.
Unfortunately, as you all are probably aware, this, this particular lot was spot-zoned in 2013 and changed from limited commercial to residential one. The limited commercial having zero sideline zoning, and the residential one having five feet. And this, we bought in 2011, and this spot zoning occurred in 2013, so we were then immediately limited in what we could do. We had to move, we had to be five feet off the southwest corner, which on this map is, has the word Court, the name of family of Court, and five feet off of Cornish, where it was previously one foot off of Cornish, and three feet off of the Court line. So we, we really did get, and the actual footprint of the house is 448 feet, square feet. The original house is 441 square, the original lot was 441. So we, we really did box ourselves into a corner because of the spot zoning that occurred in 2013 for that, just this lot. It was none, the rest of this Cornish, Swain, North Beach is a limited commercial LC zone.
So this was the only one that didn't change, huh?
No, this did, this is the only one that did change. This changed to R1.
And all the rest, the whole, the other rest of the block?
From the, from the zoning maps that I have seen, because I've gone back and looked at that spot zoning, and that was along with, there were several other around the area. In other words, I think on the other side of Cornish is where the dormitory is for White Elephant and everything, and I think some of those got changed, but.
So they changed those and then came across?
They came, that one lot across the street.
And picked up one lot.
Got changed, but I don't know what other ones did. I just know none of the others in this block did. So that, and, and this is one of the, the points we made to the Board of Appeals, was that it, you know, unfortunately, the lot was divided back when 1,145 square feet were accepted by someone, and, which now is, I think, 5,000 is your minimum requirement.
Well, it was, it was divided under the 81L provision.
Exactly. I didn't remember the number.
It predates, basically, it means it predates.
The structure's predated zoning.
Yes.
But what has actually happened here is that both structures have been enormously improved and enlarged.
Yeah, ours was not enlarged a great deal. It was just, it was, it's definitely improved.
It has a full second floor.
Yes, and, and the other structure, as you are aware, was flooded, you know, two years ago, when that whole area was underwater.
Yeah, no, I understand. Would the zoning board have granted for you to be able to stay within the setback? Did you ask for a permit?
I honestly can't tell you that. We had an attorney representing us. We were not actually at that, at that appeals meeting, attorney brush was representing us.
So did they deny a request to stay within the setback, or no?
They gave us, and they did allow us less setback on the adjoining lot. In other words, the lot to the, what is it, southwest, we're closer there. We're 5'3", 5'3 inches, but we have, the corner of the deck is, is two feet. They allowed us a deck to be within two feet. The actual, the actual cement foundation is at the required five-plus feet. It's 5'3", I believe.
Sorry, were you asking if the ZBA allowed the driveway where it was?
No, I was talking about when they redesigned the structure. They probably could have asked, and I just don't know if they did, if it could stay within the sideline setback.
Gotcha.
Because he was saying that the five feet.
Typically, they'll let you stay within your footprint. You might be able to go up, but typically they'll let you stay within your footprint, or you have to go, stay within your footprint for the existing floor and then step in for the other floor, is what I've seen before, too.
I just know that they gave us the variation that we were less non-conforming than previously. In other words, we had improved, improved a great deal. Corner lot like this is supposed to be 10 feet on both streets. So that was one of the non-conforming, we went from three foot to five foot, no, from one foot on the Cornish to, to five foot, but that still is not technically what your corner lots are supposed to be.
And what's the distance between the edge of the house here and the public way?
I mean, the. 10 foot to the northwest, 5'3".
Jim, it's from the corner, it's 10 here?
Yes.
From this edge of the porch to here?
Okay.
And then 5.3 here.
So you've got, I mean, I'm not trying to be a driveway designer, but could you, if you took that grass up, and could you put, make a kind of a, you know, driveway that you kind of turn into, and, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I, to be honest with you, I don't know. I haven't really thought of that.
Yeah. So anyway, I think there's enough, I mean, I hear, you know, concerns about granting a license within the right-of-way, and if there are other ways to accommodate this through the planning board or some other design, might be something else for you to investigate.
If people were, you know, leaning toward a license, I would only consider a license for one year. I'd consider it for one season to give you guys a chance to sort out the telephone pole and move the, you know, and move the driveway next winter. I think it'd be pretty hard to get some of that done now, and it would give town a chance to sort out the neighbor, and you have to work with them to figure out what they're going to do for their parking. But I wouldn't want to see it more than, than one year if that were where the board were going.
I am wondering, I don't think that would solve their certificate of occupancy issue.
Yeah, right.
Because it would be temporary. I mean, we might be able to give them a period of time before they have to move it, but that's not going to solve them getting a CO, I wouldn't think.
Hmm.
If they can't stay there.
Couldn't you get a temporary CO for, you know, a year? I mean.
I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, that's, I've had a partial CO for my building, they gave me half of it, and I opened it, I did the other half. I don't know.
We, just a point of, of information, we, in buying the property, we replaced the Bush's ex- exactly where they were, in other words, we didn't, uh, we didn't move them towards the right of way. And the driveway as you saw from the pictures doesn't encroach upon the right of way at all in the sense of the tar. We didn't touch the edge of the, of the street. I'm, I, we did touch, we didn't, uh, cut into the street at all, so it's, the street is not narrowed there in any way.
I think, I mean, I, I see why you did it. And I think that is also part of the problem as well is, is the creep of, the neighbors did it and it looked right and it looked good and it kind of worked for you as well. I do think that if there's 10 feet between the porch and the guy wire, that is, nine feet would be considered reasonable for, is standard for a driveway width. And if there's 10 feet, nine to 10 feet, there is the option of putting the driveway in from, uh.
Cornish.
Cornish. And it's not, either way, it's not ideal with the distance to the corner. I, I am uncomfortable with a license with that much of the parking space on public land. And the precedent that it sets, again, I, I think you will get that visual creep, but if you do it and the neighbor next to you does it, then someone else is gonna see it and think it's okay to do it. And I think it, the precedent could be. I'd be okay with a year to give time, the, the temporary, and then you can figure out the CO, but that would be.
And unfortunately, um, I think we're gonna have to enforce the encroachment policy that the Board of Selectmen has with those hedges to make sure that they're moved back to the property line. Because that also is a hindrance to site visibility around the corner for other people and, so that's just something to consider.
So they would need to be moved back toward the house?
Correct, they, they would, where you see the property line here in yellow, the hedges would have to go back to here.
So I think the guy wire right now is on the corner of the property line, correct?
It's out here.
I would think you could petition Verizon to move the wire, if that's a real issue.
We spent 18 months doing that, by phone calls and attempts by the contractor to, to have that done. It did get moved once, we were trying to just see if they could eliminate it, because there's not a lot of wires, but they couldn't, they didn't, they did move it that way. It does make for a very narrow parking space. And I only wish, in retrospect, that we had been able to say something about the spot zoning that was done, because that really put us at a disadvantage, which we, at that time, it was before the flood, before we got flooded, and we weren't thinking of losing the space. But things changed when we realized we either had to, we had to get up out of the ground or forget the house.
What's the measure of the board?
I think we should go with the, the town administration recommendation.
Is that a motion?
I sympathize and I understand, it's not, it's not a good situation.
Jason, you need to adjust your mic, people can't hear you.
Last week I was too loud.
Do we need to do any provision to allow them a certain amount of time before they have to move it? Or it's really being, because there's, they're not getting a CO?
I mean, it may be a, like a building inspector question on, can, would a temporary easement allow them to have a CO?
I think they're just gonna have to work it out with the building department. If the board is not going to give them a license, then in order to get the CO, they're gonna have to move the item. Within some kind of timeframe.
And I guess my question is, if we gave them a one-year license, what would happen in the building, in the building department? You know, would that, would that be a help, would that help, is, I guess, my question?
I, I.
I don't know.
I'm not sure if that would help or not, um, but that's just one more thing that has to be monitored by somebody and dealt with then. I mean, I'm sure there's gonna need to be a reasonable amount of time, just as a matter of practicality to remove the item.
I mean, the encroachment policy right now states that, um, we have different categories of encroachments, but this would be maybe like a level two or level three. And normally that's 15 days to remove the encroachment. I think we would be more than willing to work with the homeowner to give them more time to address this, but as long as we know that it's moving in the right direction. And we would be working with the adjacent homeowner as well.
I don't know if this is an avenue for you, but hearing your story about the spot zoning and going from a five-foot setback, from a one foot to a five foot and.
Actually, it's, I believe, zero. I believe the LC is zero.
You bought the property in 2011, it was changed. And your position is that things around it weren't changed and, uh, I don't know if you can get relief from that, but it certainly, um, seems like the rules were changed for, on you. And, uh, I don't know if there's some, um, you know, recompense for that, but.
As I think you can understand, if we had known, if it had been left LC, we could have not moved the house away from the courts, the next house in Cornish. We would have put the foundation there and that would have given us an extra, it would have gone from, uh, you know, given us extra three feet on the porch end of the house and that would have changed this whole thing dramatically. And, and I understand, we, I haven't got a better answer for it, but we messed up in terms of doing it. But as, as you did point out, it, it, we did, the appearance seemed to look good and it seemed to fit well. And it gave us the advantage of not backing out into the intersection. I would say if you are on Cornish, you'll discover the Cape Cod Express goes up and down Cornish. Well, it's a busy little street and that intersection is, uh, is, is busy, but.
Do we know if the neighbor is in R1 or LC?
The neighbor's in LC.
Okay, pardon me?
The neighbor's house is, I believe, in LC.
Okay, so their, their driveway may be okay.
The driveway is not made to do with the building setback.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, all right.
Um, is there a second to Jason's motion?
As long, I'll second it with the understanding we give them reasonable time, which I'm sure we will, to take care of it.
And, um, and in regard to, um, looking into creating off-street parking, I just, I think that we should see what that would look like, but not commit to, commit to it.
Is that something that you'd like to come back to the board? Or do you want to just deal with it administratively? I mean, I could bring it to traffic safety and have them review it.
Yeah, have traffic safety look at it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Could I ask the question, what's reasonable time? We have a mortgage in this house, the bank obviously wants a CO. Um, and we're in violation if we don't get one with the bank.
I think that for us, it's.
ASAP.
You know, just as soon as you can get a landscaper to move it. And that's, as far as the building department, we don't control the issuance of the CO.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That was a hard one.
Okay, town managers report, the fire station work group update.
So we have our OPM, Owners Project Manager, John Lemieux here from Veratex, and Neil Patterson, who's the chairman of the fire station work group. And they're going to take you through what the most recent, um, actions have been. There's a history of the project in your packet and a short presentation that John's gonna take us through here.
Sure, so everything that you'll see on this PowerPoint is gone into in depth in the documents that you have in your packet tonight. So, uh, basically, why are we here? There was a bid last June, 2016. As a result of that bid, we were over budget. There were two things that when we got together with the Board of Selectmen and then the Finance Committee after the fact, they said, "Look, let's get the work group back together." And that work group met and, uh, after a number of meetings, came to the conclusion that changing the program of the fire station, meaning changing the square footage that was in the design, wasn't the way to go. There'd been a lot of time and money spent on coming up with what chief and the department need for a new fire station, so that wasn't touched. But how can we save some money? Well, there were two approaches that were looked at. One was to redesign the HVAC system in the existing building. The, or excuse me, the existing design. The existing design was originally designed to attach to the existing police station. Unfortunately, that created more a very, uh, non-competitive situation with as far as the HVAC costs go, which resulted in an HVAC number that was over a million dollars just in that one line item over the original, over the estimate. So we looked at two, multiple, uh, different kinds of systems. And ultimately, a decision was made to have the design changed to a variable refrigerant flow system. That's on the conventional design. But before we go back to bid with the conventional design, also discussed was modular procurement. Everyone has heard about the Oakbluffs Fire Station, to the point of ad nauseam at times. The reality is, is Oakbluffs built a fire station when the procurement laws were a little bit different and it allowed them to build a station using a prefabricated metal building. If you look at the police station we have and the designs for the fire station, it's, it, it wasn't well-suited for modular procurement. But you know what, we said, you know, given the amount of money here, let's go ahead and try it. So, uh, KBA, the designer, did go back. They changed the plans and made them suitable for modular procurement. We went out and put it out to bid. So what I have in front of you here are the three basically benchmark, benchmarks. The original budget, which is the $17 million that was comprised of two appropriations, 15 million plus an additional two. The results from June of 2016 are there. The low, lowest responsible bid was 15.7 million. We did have a bid that was lower. Unfortunately, they had a couple of issues with their bid package. There was some statutory documentation that should have been included, it wasn't. The Attorney General said, "Gotta toss it." We did, so we were left with the 15.7 number. That resulted in a total project budget of 18.27 million, uh, which was an overage of 1.2 million. We brought that to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen voted in favor of moving ahead and trying to find some supplemental funding. FinCom shot it down. And it's at that point that the work group was kind of brought back. The third benchmark you have in front of you is the modular procurement, which was bid in March. The number that came back for the modular procurement was 15, uh, 15.678 million, resulting in a total project budget very close to the last version, 18.2. But the modular procurement, we had removed the paving and landscaping and we had to pay some additional design fees to KBA to design it modular as well as to change the design for the conventional procurement. Because if you recall, when we were tasked to do this, everyone decided to follow two paths. Let's do the conventional redesign while we modularly procure. So if we don't have favorable modular results, which we don't, we end up with a situation where we can continue the ball rolling to getting a conventional bid with the redesign of the HVAC system. That results right now in an overage of 2.2 million. So, again, the project was bid, Delbrook, J.K. Scanlon, who have done a lot of work on the island, were the only respondent to the package. Their bid was over budget right away. Compounding this was the fact that the Attorney General notified the town that the bid had been protested by one of the larger HVAC subcontractors, basically calling into question a number of issues, saying this project never should have been modular construction. And when we questioned Delbrook, J.K. Scanlon about it, their method wasn't close enough to modular to be able to pass the sniff test. They were going to use panels and the AG decided that to take a strict interpretation of the procurement law and that this needed to be boxes, boxes with walls and a roof and a floor. So at the end of the day, we were already over budget. The work group voted unanimously to, um, basically couldn't award the project because of money, didn't want to proceed with any sort of bid protest and fight for a fight that we didn't have the money to pay for anyway. So, uh, voted unanimously to scrap the modular procurement and continue with the conventional procurement, which is why we're here tonight. So what's next? The question for all of you is, do we bid this project in the fall of 2017 or in the spring of 2018? At this point, it's very clear, you don't have the money to do it. We didn't in June. You have less money to do it in, just now in March. And you're going to have less money to do it, you know, or you're going to need more supplemental funds in September. Or you'll need even more supplemental funds in March, April, or May of next year. Escalation is still running about 10% a year. So the difference between bidding it in the spring, excuse me, the fall and the spring could be anywhere from four to six percent. If you take that 10% and break it down to 0.83 percentage, uh, percentage of month. The other thing that complicates this is in June of this year, the International Building Code will issue a new edition, okay? And that happens, we're kind of somewhat regularly, not yearly. We are, I'm gonna get the additions wrong. Let's say that right now the building is designed to the ninth edition of the code. Right now, if that code changes in June to the 10th edition, we have six months grace period to, if you've got a job in bidding or in design, you can stay with that old code. If we wait till the spring, the reality is, is you are going to have to pay KBA more dollars to redesign the project further before you put it out to bid. Again, it could be 10,000, it could be 30. You know, we don't know what that is until we see what the code is bringing forth. So what we did is kind of, is wanted to show you basically the two, the two tracks. The items on the left happen regardless. Right away, we have to pre-qualify. As you recall, we've talked about the fact that, um, any project over $10 million requires pre-qualification, um, the Commonwealth, it's, it's, it's in the laws. So what do we do? We start by placing the ad. And again, these are estimated dates backing into a, the fall town meeting date, which was estimated in a spring town meeting date. We run the ad, pre-qual responses are due, take about a month to review them and then invite the firms in. We place the ad in the central register for the bid for filed subbid and GCs. The ad runs, filed subbids come in, um, then the GC bids come in. We do the reference checks and the idea is to come to you the next time with a real number, a bid, a bid number, no more estimates, just like we did last June. You know, that's why I'm not here saying that the number's going to be, you know, 17-point-whatever-million, 18-million. We want to go and get a number from the marketplace and bring it to the next town meeting. The question is which town meeting to bring it to. Do you call a special one in the fall or do we wait until March? I know there are costs involved to run a town meeting, to have an election. I understand that. I will tell you that the cost of waiting the five months will more than eclipse the money it may cost you to do that. But again, there's.
Now, if we put it out to bid, it, don't you have 45 days to award the contract? If we put it out to bid.
That is correct.
In late February, wouldn't we be within the six months?
No, because if the code changes in June 1st.
Oh, June, I'm sorry, I was thinking September.
Yeah, you have till December. Again, and I don't want to over, overplay the, the code issue.
I was thinking it was September.
It's just another issue to deal with. So, will we have, will we have time to deal with it? Absolutely, you would, because comes in in June, they can take the design right then and change it if the decision has been made to go to the, to wait until spring to do this.
What are the likely code changes that you envision?
I don't even, I, to be honest with you, they don't know either. They hear about them, they have some ideas. I asked that same question, I said, "Give me an idea." Then they said, "Could be 10 grand in redesign, could be 50." The impact of the building, I think the impact of the building, they don't see anything monumental coming, some big seismic change, what have you.
Okay.
The issue more for you, the impact of cost, is just the waiting. It's not so much the code change.
I know the residential code, it was a lot of energy efficiency. But I'm assuming that the building was already designed for that.
Correct, that is correct.
So I'm guessing that part isn't gonna be.
KBA already, you know, designed to a stretch code, even if you're not a stretch code community, because it's just smart, smart building practice now.
Right, so I'm assuming that if the change, the change is gonna be a time issue. And I, I don't really, I don't, not even really, I don't favor a fall town meeting. I think that we're sort of meetinged out. And I think we, you know, it's disappointing that we, you know, we tried to move forward on this. Uh, sometimes if we don't speak a lot here at the mic, people in the public and other people don't think that we've thought about everything or looked at stuff. But, you know, I'm channeling Bobby right now. You know, we, we pulled out the things we could pull out and we're gonna find a way to get this done, you know, when the selectman did it. And the selectman made an intelligent, informed, smart decision with your help. And now we find ourselves sort of staring down the gun another two, three million dollars, four million dollars. So I, I just, it's unfortunate.
Yeah, and this, I mean, what I have on this last slide is just a simple graph of, I mean, it's kind of intuitive. See where it's going? I mean, the difference between the, the brown and the blue column is seven years. So, you know, it didn't, you know, you can assume it's a steady, it's a steady climb. Labor materials are always increasing.
Yeah, it's almost, it was, it's 10%, it's seven years, it's almost doubled, it's about, it's probably 9%, so.
So Neil, I mean, do you have any comments about the process? Because Neil, Neil's been involved since, back in '08 when this whole thing started.
Yeah, I've been lucky enough to have been involved in this, in the, this building we're in.
in and continuing on. And just a couple of points that I'd like to raise or bring up. When I was lucky enough to come to Nantucket in 1979, they built the present station. When they moved in, it was at capacity in 1980. And here we are in 2017. It, you know, I'm really looking for advice where we go as a committee from here. Time is money, pretty obvious, the graph says it all. The present department is, it's going to be a busy summer. I, you know, one thing I was going to talk about at town meeting, but luckily the article passed, was runtimes of ambulances. And Mark McDougal was really concerned that insurance companies use that as a yardstick to set insurance rates. And the longer a runtime takes, say Madiket, Skonset or wherever, they base the time on your insurance rate. So, you know, either taxes are going to go up or insurance rates are going to go up. So that's just an aside and an observation. So it's really, luckily the ball's in your court and it's, I've only done this for eight years, so we can maybe make it last another year or two.
Well, if you're looking for a suggestion, mine would be to really push this, if we do a spring town meeting, if that's what comes up, is to spend the time and really push it. I think knowing a lot of the taxpayers, it's going to be a tough go at the ballot anyway. You know, I mean, as we've seen before, so...
Just as an FYI, the drawings basically are at a point, if you said go tonight, they're ready. So if you say wait, I'm sorry. The drawings are at a point where they're ready to go. If you said go tonight, they would have them, you know, more than ready, you know, to, you know, be ready. They're ready now. Wouldn't have to wait till August. The reason why we have to wait is now this pre-qualification process has to take place. We don't want to pre-qualify too early because then you're disconnecting with the reality of the bidding market. You want it to be within a couple of months of the bid. So if the thought is to wait till spring, it's fine. We downshift and we wait and we get it set up for spring. You know, I assume it's a town meeting, it's probably a vote. You know, on top of that, both would need to be scheduled within that 45-day timeframe just to stay clean. You know, when you're dealing, you know, if you're dealing with a private project or a smaller project, you can talk to a bidder and say, hey, can you hold your bid a little bit longer? The problem is, there'll be 15 filed subbidders on this. If one of them says, I'm not holding my bid, it's, you know, it's off the table. So we really need to have our ducks in a row to come into you with a number that hopefully passes the town meeting, goes to a vote the following weekend or whenever it's set up so that then with that vote, we have the authorization to sign a contract and move ahead.
So first of all, I applaud you for coming up with a concept of pricing it before we go to town meeting. Because as we've seen over the last several years, if we get a price and then we get the bid back and it's not so, I think, I think that's an excellent suggestion. One other thing, maybe it's a wrench, but one of the lessons we learned with the Island Home was there are lots of community conversations about the use of the existing site if we were to move to another location. I'm not saying it's within, you know, Vertex's job to do that, but, you know, somebody should be thinking about, are we going to monetize the existing site and use that to offset the cost or other, you know, other, other options, so...
In one of the previous reports, we recommended that the existing fire station be sold. And the analogy was such that, you know, you're buying a new car, you trade in the old one. Some of it, it wasn't a unanimous decision, but majority decided that that was the sensible thing. And that's something you can take to the voters and say, look, we're upgrading, but we're going to sell this. And hopefully that's going to offset, well, will offset the cost. But it's incredibly difficult and after eight years, it's, it's, you know, it's incredible. Just when you think you've got everything organized, one vote, you're back to square one and wasting millions of dollars. So...
Do you want to say something?
Whatever the board's decision, whether it's the spring or the fall, we're going to do everything we can to educate the public and, and really get the information out there. What we're talking about is a monetary difference. So it could be anywhere from half a million to a million dollars price difference, which I, it's a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of things, it's a, you know, it's a percentage of the total budget. So it's, that's where we are.
I mean, I think that if you look at the history, we had difficulty getting this through and it was a huge push. And there was a, there were a lot of people from sort of all different sides of the aisle that came together to get this police station passed. So I think it's going to take this, you know, under the current, your current situation's going to take that amount of effort again to ensure that this gets its way through. And I think we all learned that this last town meeting. You know, the things that had the work done passed and some of the other things that weren't quite ready or, you know, didn't. And I think you're going to, you have some, you have a lot of time to do it right and get it through. And I hope we do. I mean, that's...
I think people recognize that we need a new fire station and they've, they've shown that through their votes so far. And unfortunately, we're in this situation currently where time will affect the bottom line more. But everything gets so busy over the summer and I, I think that as a community, it's better for us to do all of this outreach after the, the season with the new building code changes and just really be better prepared for spring, which will probably be even a little bit early, well, maybe not earlier than the Sierra, but...
That's an estimated date. I, I know that could end up fall. I know there's an issue, this coming, Easter's on the 1st of April.
Yeah.
So it, I went early to kind of give you the conservative. I know that that town meeting could end up...
It's going to be somewhere with, within, within that week probably.
Bottom line is, is we start up the town meeting date and the schedule gets worked backwards.
Worked backwards, yeah.
And it's, it's easy.
Yeah. I mean, I know everyone wants this to go forward. I, I want it to go forward and pass. So I think we should shoot for the spring. I think that otherwise, we just, we end up just rushing towards town meeting.
I agree, I agree.
Over and over again and not, and not necessarily spending the time that we need to on everything.
Could I, I'm sorry. Just, just to be clear, there is no rushing on the, sorry.
Well, I, I don't mean that so much on your end.
There's no, there's no, from a, from a technical project management side, you know, if, I'm not bidding this till September. It's April right now, I've got five months. I, it's, as you can see, it gets tight two or three weeks from now if we don't start just because, because I've really taken the, a month, really a month for every, you know, every piece of this. So we have the time for it. It really becomes a question of the time of selling it.
That's more of what I'm referring to.
And the only question I have for you, just as a committee, and I don't know the answer to this, where's the better group of likely residents to vote for this? Is it a fall town meeting or is it a spring town meeting? Where are there more, where are there less? I mean, that's maybe a strategic thing you might want to think about a little bit.
It's generally better attendance in the spring.
Okay.
I'd just like to add, I mean, the fall, we were, you're going to have to sell it with a lot more money come the spring. I mean, the new building code, the 10% municipal increase in costs, and I mean, I'm, you're all very intelligent people to be sitting up there. It's, that's going to make it harder to sell because it's more money. And I can see some people saying, well, why did you wait? If you knew the building code was going to change. I mean, that's my feeling, but maybe that comes from being, doing this for eight years now.
The reality is, is that at a, at a 15 and change number that we're at right now for, 4 point something percent, is $675,000 is the cost of waiting. That's just the cost of waiting, that's not the cost of redesign, it's not the cost of potential code changes that are in there. You know, if there is a wild energy, I mean, I don't think there's going to be, we don't know. So I don't want to sell a, a wild card. But that, to me, that's, that's a real number and costs do escalate. And that's, that is the cost of the town for waiting. So it becomes a question of, can you do it in five months? And I know it's the summer, I don't know anyone wants to hear about it. Or do we do it in 11 months? You know, again, either case, it's going to be a real number that's being brought forward. And I know that an election in the fall is, you know, not something you usually do, or a ballot vote, I should say, it's not something you typically do. But just, you know, wanted to throw those cards on the table to...
I'll give you another reason why the fall could be scary is if there ends up being a group of neighbors or someone else in opposition, it's a lot easier for them to impact a fall town meeting or a fall vote.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
I know. And so from a, from a political standpoint, I think the spring, you've got, you've got a larger group of people coming to the town meeting and you've got a larger group of people going to the ballot box because they're used to going. And I think, you know, you don't run the chance of having a neighborhood torpedo it. And so I just, even though, I don't, you know, I'm not happy that we didn't get it through FinCom. You know, and I, it's admirable what they were trying to do, but it, you know, but we didn't have to do that. And I, you know, so we are where we are. I think the spring is a chance to do it.
The good point is that at this point, you've now, you've touched everything that was asked to be touched. You looked at the modular, we've, this is the building at 21,000 square feet or whatever the number is, I forget it now. You've now turned over every stone and the reality is, the number will now be the real number that the market says, you know, that the market says that it is.
I think at that price point of six and change, I think that's a reasonable risk to take and to wait till we are ready to do it in the spring personally.
So, I mean, let's round it up. It's going to be a million, it's going to be a million dollars if we wait until the spring. And what, what are we worth, is that worth it to us? What else can we do that we can't do in the fall? Do we have more time to think about what the property will be used for, that'll make voters feel more comfortable? What other advantages are there that cost us a million, 700,000, whatever it is?
Well, is it to our advantage to have it up to the newest code standard?
Code's the code. It's always, it's always changing. I mean, homes, you know, homes used to be just fine. Now they're super tight, you know, and that's, you know, energy codes and things like that. Is the, is the home any better? Yeah, you could argue that maybe your energy costs are less, but you can also argue that, you know, we don't change enough air in the homes now, we end up with other different issues. Who's to say? You know? Again, I am not a code expert. And I, again, I tried to get some info from KBA and they said, look, anything we say is really guesswork until the IBC actually says, okay, here are the changes. And June 1st is the target date. So I thought about, well, do we wait and see what happens June 1st and then run back here and go, we got to get started? It could be July 1st, it could be August 1st. It's a, it's a ballpark time when they, you know, everyone knows it's coming, but there's not like a date on a calendar. It just, it's issued when it's issued.
Maybe we'll push out to September and we'll be okay.
What's the projected life of this building? What are they, what's the design life?
50-plus.
Yeah. And the reason I'm asking, we asked the school that and it was like 30 or 40 years. I'm like, how can it only be 30 or 40 years? We have buildings that are 150 years old. Oh, you'd have to use different nails and different screws. And some of the center, I said, I'm like, well, what would that cost?
This is a largely masonry building.
Well, that's great.
You know, it's got some wood on it because HGC, you know, we have to.
But the most of it's masonry and it's not going anywhere.
Steel construction, yeah.
That's great.
And this building looks great, the exception of some paint peeling on the windows. This building, you know, this is solid and it's 10, 10 years old and it looks great.
So I hope you say that and 10 more.
So outside of cost, what else is there? What's the disadvantages of having it in the spring? Is there anything else? Just making sure if we're going to vote in the spring, we're all okay with that extra cost.
It pushes the actual building a bit further out.
Right.
It's, you know...
Right. So the reality here is with a town meeting in, let's say, April of 18, you are theoretically looking at a May of 18 contract signing. It's probably September of 19. It's the, it's before, just before the winter of 19, I would expect this thing to be being finished. It's 14 to 16 months construction period. We haven't gotten to the point of stroking that onto the contract. And I think the other, the duration first time was 14, 14 or 15. I'd have to look back, but, you know, it's a year and four months is probably a good, good thought. And again, none of that includes, there's nothing has been talked about, about the old, the existing building, you know, environmental testing, demo, any of that could certainly be considered. But, you know, just as, as a thought, if you are thinking about selling that and getting doing that, it does buy you the time to do a little investigation, maybe spend a little bit of money to do a hazmat report to see what it's going to cost you to clean it up before someone will take it, you know, that kind of thing. I'm sure it'd be easy to get a real estate assessment on the value of the property, but you should think about what the costs are going to be, you know, to do that.
Yeah, I think we'll really have to think about that because I'm sure that there will be a lot of ideas for potential community uses there as well. And we'd have to weigh those options.
How much resistance, I mean, there is more general consensus that we, I mean, we know we need a new fire station. So the resistance is really going to be on the, the price, the cost.
Right. At the end of the day, the purpose of the work group was to basically be able to answer those questions later. And the work group got together and said, okay, first of all, how do you, how can you save money? Cut square footage. Can we cut any square footage? And the work group basically came back and said, no. Very quickly, they came back, this is the program, we're staying with the program. It's what the town needs moving forward, you know, 50-plus years. So it really does just come down to you either like the price or you don't. Because what you're building is a program that we see, you know, in a lot of new fire stations. We're in the middle of four different ones right now. And for our headquarters, this is the size the headquarters are. They're about 20,000 to 24,000 square feet, four or five bays. I mean, that's, you know, you're not building anything different than what they're building in Littleton or Westford or Situate right now. The problem is, is that you're on Nantucket. And that's the, that's the issue.
The cost difference.
And people, we heard from Scanlon, I said, why is your modular number the same as my conventional number from a year ago? Minus paving, minus landscaping. He said, he used the words white hut construction market and nobody wants to work here. And if you're going to work here, you're going to pay to work here. You're going to pay to get them to come over. So it's, it's a lousy situation to be in as a, as a municipal owner, but it is the reality. So the best thing we can do is not give you a number and come to you, come back to you with a real number. So if the decision is April of 2018, you will get a real number in April of 2018 based on who's busy, who's not, and how many, you know, as many contractors as we can pre-qualify, you know, to come out there. Same thing if we do it in the fall.
Right. So I think we're looking for a decision on when we're doing it. Does anyone want to propose a motion?
I move we do it in the spring, next spring.
I'll stick at that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we will set a date in a few minutes and then we'll have the date to work back from.
Great.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have third quarter budget reports for the current fiscal year. General Fund, Airport, Enterprise, Wanaka and Skonset. And I think Ryan, either Julia, one of them is going to take us to the general fund.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we have the new format that we had kind of, we had taken you through last, last week. So starting on the first page, revenues on the third quarter are up 7%, which were trending in a positive direction year over year. In the nine-month period, they're up a little over 3%. When we actually back out the $836,000, which was the reef, the reimbursement for Winter Storm Juno to the pier, we're actually up 4% year over year, which is more accurate reflection of where we're at. Expenses are up 7% this quarter, which is, in year over year, they're up about 5%, which is generally related to health insurance trends that we're seeing. We're seeing a little bit of an uptake in the actual claims that are occurring in the Health Insurance Trust Fund, as well as increased the pension costs and increases in the, the two, the annual increases to the two enterprise funds in terms of the subsidies that we've had. Below, we have a five-year history that we had talked about in the report. And I'll certainly, if there's any questions as we go through, or if you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer them as well.
One on the revenue, you'll get to it later. But, and I know in the past, we'd looked at a chart that had new growth and versus Prop 2.5.
Okay. Yep, we could include that. It's not included in this, but it's one that we could move forward.
Because I know when you talk about a 7% increase, it's how much of that is Prop 2.5? How much is new growth?
Sure. And we can include a, a five-year history of new growth and then what the five-year history of the Prop 2.5 increases were, if that, for, in the next quarter, we'll do that.
And then the other, just, and you may not know it off the top of your head, 13 to 17, and we went up from 4.1 to 7.3, wages and benefits, salaries and benefits, third quarter.
Yeah. And I'll actually, I can, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I can show you, I can give you an exam, an answer on where the primary drivers were.
Yeah. And how, is that, how, is that, how many new, new employees is that?
Right.
How much is, you know?
Related to health insurance and that. Yes, we can do that.
We know a lot of it's health insurance, but.
Yeah, we can do that. Absolutely.
Yeah, because that's pretty.
So pages three and four, I primarily, the, the, just the breakdown of all the revenue. If there's any questions on any specific categories, if I don't know the answer off the top of my head, we will get it for you. And the graph, which shows some of the trends on what we've been seeing, which is historically what we've been seeing on an annual basis with rooms and meals, both rooms and meals tax performing ahead of the prior quarters. And excise tax is pretty similar, is actually similar to the last quarter of last year, which is a positive sign. Building permits were lagging a little bit, but I think it's some of it may be doing, due to timing of the ending of the quarter and the transition to when some of the permit dollars collected were turned over. So it's something that we are paying attention to in the fourth quarter.
I just, maybe, just, do you know where the bill processes are, some communities put forward short-term rooms tax? I know there's been some talk in the legislature about.
Oh, the short-term rentals?
Yeah. I haven't, I haven't heard recently where those are in the terms of the.
I, if memory serves me correctly, the governor's budget did include a portion, a, a bill, or it included in the budget, and the House did not have it, if that's.
Melissa might, no.
Yeah.
She's been tracking it for us.
Oh, good.
Hi, Melissa Murphy, Director of Culture and Tourism. That's, that's accurate. I think that still, the concept is being negotiated on the House floor, whether there's benefits. And now it goes to the Senate. I think the consensus, the state level, is that by having the short-term rental tax expanded to cover vacation rental by owner, VRBO, Airbnb, et cetera, HomeAway, what other kinds of licensing would have to go along with that? Because these are unlicensed facilities right now. And currently, we only collect tax on licensed facilities. So it, it opens up a bit of a Pandora's Box. I think some people, the Airbnb folks are hoping that if we, if they pay the tax, maybe they can get a pass on licensing. I don't want to speak for them, but that's a little bit of the politics around that. We are working with the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce, who is actively keeping a finger on this. And Janet Schulte, our Director of Chamber of Commerce, is keeping me up to date.
I saw an article from Wes, Wes Tisbury, from the Martha's Vineyard newspaper, about how they were trying to introduce licensing of all rentals between the Board of Health and.
Yes. And I, I read the same article. I don't remember all the details. I think it was to create some parameters, also to do some secure, long-term rentals, so that there was a certain percentage of the rental market available for year-round, not necessarily affordable, but just available for the year-round community. So.
It'd be good to find out more about that.
Yeah. Julian Sears done a great job of keeping us up to date on some of those initiatives community-wide through the Cape and Islands, and as has Dylan. So I've got my foghorn ear out.
There's a couple other, I think it was Winthrop, or there were a couple, west of Austin and then east of Austin. I think there were a couple other communities that did the same thing. They've set up rules, you know, rules for Airbnbs, and they have to have signage and some other things.
That's right. And only a certain percentage of those apartments in a certain area could be available for those kinds of short-term rentals, because what you were finding was that it was not just me and my apartment renting it out occasionally. It would be developers coming in and buying up buildings and then using them for Airbnb and not having to pay any kind of tax on it.
And people were wandering around in neighborhoods, looking for the buildings. And there was a bunch of issues.
Couldn't find it, walking into the wrong areas, and so on and so forth.
Right. There were, there were a lot of issues. And there's also out in Amherst, Mass, they do licensing for, because they have issues with the students.
That's right.
So they, they have a whole program where they license homes. You have to make sure you have parking and the person's name. There has to always be a contact available. So if something happens, the police department knows where to go, and there's a fee paid.
That's right.
And there's an inspection to make sure that the place is safe for people to live in. So, and so there's a lot of other things that we could do if we were, you know, if we wanted to, you know, sort of.
Capture that, that potential revenue in that market. Roberto and I are actually meeting with a third-party company in the next week or two, who's, I think, is a bit of a sales pitch to communities to help you gauge what licensing, how would you, would monitor that? How would you, as a community, monitor those licensing? And then also track how people are making their tax payments.
Just from a logistics point of view, the Barnstable, the town of Barnstable has a bylaw specifically for rental licensing and things like that. They're actually getting the same sales pitch next week that we're gonna be getting. They have a full-time inspector doing nothing but rental inspections, and a part-time admin doing nothing but handling the rental inspection program. We have a four-person staff. I'm gonna need at least one other person to take this on if we're gonna be doing that. And then furthermore, we need full buy-in from selectmen, town manager, possibly FinCom, Board of Health, depending on this sort of thing. Because when that full buy-in is not there, you get what happened in the Framingham Project, where we got this bylaw passed, we got a full-time inspector, but there was no buy-in from the selectmen or the town manager, and the program fell apart. So it's just, it's one of those things that before we pass a bylaw, before we just jump in with two feet, we need to definitely get our due diligence done ahead of time. We don't want to be, this is one of those projects that you don't want to go in without the full picture.
I'll just add a, a last reminder that what I've been advised from Wendy Northcross, who's the President of the Cape Cod Chamber, you know, whether or not we should be considering our own town bylaws or anything as an individual community. She said, you know, please, let, let's see what happens at the state level first and see what they dictate, and then let's adapt to it. Because if we start having communities making their own rules, then it gets very difficult at the state level to navigate all of that. So we'll keep our ear open, attend workshops, there's phone calls, phone meetings, and we'll start, we're, we've got our ears to the ground.
So is there any other questions on revenue? Or we, we're trending where we would expect to, and we're up a little bit, which is good. So we believe we'll end the year on a, a very positive note, much, much similar vein that we did last year. So on page, let me look. On page five starts the expenditures, the graphs again, showing kind of where the money is trending in the, in the quarter. Matt, this actually splits it out for expenses and, and health insurance, but we'll provide a little bit more detail for the, the salary expense part. The bottom, the graph in the bottom left-hand corner shows the, the trending in the, the health insurance and group insurance. Overall expenditures are still trending where we would, we expect them to be. We're working with all the, all the departments as we move forward into the fourth quarter to make sure that we limit the number of 33B transfers that we're gonna need at the end of the year. If there's any POs that can be closed to allow them to, to have additional funds if they need it. That's what we're working with on every week. We're in contact with all the department heads to, to manage the process through these last critical 13 weeks. So on page eight, we basically have, as we displayed before, we showed kind of the top 10 projects that have been accumulated and paid for, investments in capital, yes, capital projects through the quarter. Obviously, the largest one is the intermediate, intermediate school. The other, some of the other big ones, the Easy Street Bulkhead has been completed. Brant Point Propagation Facility, I think, is basically on a punch list in other discussions. And then some other smaller projects that have been, that are in various states and continuing at this point. Next page. Financing activities, since we haven't actually gone to market, what we've put in here is what we had outstanding at the end of the quarter, is $106 million in principal and interest, made up of 79.9 million in principal. Accompanying that is 26.1 million in interest obligations related to that. Our debt policy requires between 50 and 65% of the debt to be amortizing within 10 years. And currently, we stand at 50%, 57% of all debt is amortizing within the next 10 years. So we're still within the policy range. We've broken down what the interest and principal payment, or the interest and principal payments are 6.9 million in fiscal '17. And then we've also shown through the next five years, we'll be paying approximately $33.7 million in principal and interest. We can skip to the, this is the Muni Watch. There's a couple interesting trends, which I think if, when I'm, we get through the whole thing, we'll, we'll talk about, or Julie will talk about, is building permits and real estate transactions are in the red in this quarter. It's something that we've been paying attention to and will continue to look at. If you have any questions on it, Julie can tell you what she's seen and all the data that she's been looking at. And then lastly, investment report, which is the same as it was last week. It didn't change. The one thing I did receive today, which we hadn't, was the actual fees that we've paid. And to date, we've paid $17,000 in fees. We're on a transactional basis system, and most of the fees are associated with any of the new purchases and equities that we did. When you take the $17,000 fees across the actual total allotment of money that's allocated there, it's 0.25%. So it's very small. It's a very small amount that we've paid to date in fees. It's something that we will include actually in the report, and, but he just got it to me today.
And that's, that's a very positive thing to hear.
Yes, absolutely. I think he said I was the first client that actually asked for it, so.
Oh, that's even better. I'm very frugal.
I understand. And it's, I, no, it's, it's, it's good to have, because all the reports always say net of fees, and it's good to be getting it and keeping them on their toes with it, so. Does anybody have any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Raff, Airport Manager. Our report for the end of March, our revenues are up about 362,000 versus last year. The expenses are just about flat at, actually a little bit below $4,000 below last year, leaving us with a projected fund balance of 1.455. That would also leave us with 1.5 in a PFC Reserve Fund, as well as another 1.4 in our fuel revolver, which will reduce, but then the excess will flow into our operating accounts. On the next page are the details showing the changes in revenue and expense, as well as debt service. And as I said, the net total, we're ahead by about 300,000 roughly over last year at this time. Any questions? Good news is, we're still trending in the right direction.
And how have you seen for planements and things there?
Operations are up. Planements are creeping back up slightly. They're still down significantly with the loss of Island Air. Retrix is making up a little bit of that difference, though. Retrix has just added their summer schedule, which I think is up to about nine flights a day.
So that's a few, you're getting a few more planes there.
We're, we're coming back. Yeah, we're recovering some of that.
Is there anyone besides Retrix in the future? You don't have to give us names, but.
No, I'll be glad to give you the name. There's, there's a company that's out there called Island Shuttle, that's been aggressively pursuing a certification from FAA for probably a year and a half now. And I've talked to the political, all of our political delegation. I've talked to all types of members at FAA. And I hear one story, it's imminent. Next story, it's, it's a matter of months away. I really don't know. And then just yesterday, I had to respond to an application from another company that was proposing service between Nantucket and Hyannis, as well as White Plains. They had some incorrect statements in their application that they didn't have to pay us fees that I had to correct. So, but again, they're just starting the process. And that could take up to a year and a half to two years.
Where are you at in the process with the gift shop space?
It is currently out on the street for proposals. And I don't know the exact date when they're doing, but they're, I looked at the list today. I believe there's about eight or 10 folks that have picked up.
Oh, good.
And we call it, it's a retail opportunity. Could be a gift shop, could be anything.
The former gift shop space.
Yes.
Are there any other questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. This is it, Bob. We'll sit after this.
I'm pleased to give my last financial report to the Board of Selectmen. Also pleased to announce that the Water Commission has appointed Mark J. Willett as the new Director of Wanna Comet Water.
Congratulations.
Couldn't be happier about that. Like the report on the General Fund, Wanna Comet is certainly seeing the, the effects and riding the wave of economic development on Nantucket. If you look at the, the revenues are, are ahead of where they normally would be at this time, about 13%. The most telling revenue is the water connection fee. In the third quarter, there were 30 connections. You know, in March alone, 20 for $100,000. There's $150,000 in connection fees in three months. And I can tell you that it's not slacking off a bit. It's picking up, if anything. So we're, we're, that's a, the big driver has an effect on the expense budget, and we need to buy more materials than we anticipated to be able to connect people to the system. But Wanna Comet is in a strong position right now, and expect that to, or hope it continues, certainly for the whole island and our economy. But.
Just to interject, that might be a nice measure to add to our Muni Watch as a measure of the economic activity in our community.
You can clearly see by the graph that the water connections are, with three months to go, are above our budgeted projection. We're also raping the benefits of the work of the Finance Department and their restructuring of debt. That's, that's been a big help. So we're, we're, we're a little ahead of where we expect to be in revenues and where we expected to be in expenses this time of year.
So it's a good report to give, your final report.
Pardon me, Matt?
A good report to give for your final.
That's right. It, it's, yeah, yeah.
End on a positive note.
Good time to go. Probably too late. Sconset is, Sconset, Sconset. It, it doesn't change much. We, revenues are a little bit ahead of where I would have expected to be at this time of year. But, and, and expenses are right where I expect them to be. It's been, you know, the, the effect of, of all of the capital that's been put into both systems is really starting to show up in reduced maintenance costs, reduced repairs, and, and efficiency of controls, electrical efficiency. So it's, Sconset will start to pick up in, in the next two or three months if it ever stops raining. So pleased to be able to give this kind of report. And any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Selectmen's report and comments. Board Committee Liaison. I can't hear you. So the Board Committee Liaison, Work Group Representative Appointments. We have a little chart. The CPC was, was open, so I will, will stay on that.
So you will, you will stay on that?
I'll stay on that. Yep.
I just want to know, I looked, I looked up the CPC website, and your term expires in 2018, according to the website. So just.
Well, I think they just used my selectman term.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. So I think they knew something was coming, so.
I thought Jim was doing Board of Health.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had my name. My name is in there, just to open for discussion. Jim, you're there for health, with your health background.
Right. So you're not on this list, though?
It's changed up here.
Oh, it's another one. Oh.
Oh, okay. Well, I got a nice email from Malcolm McNabb, "Welcome me to the Board of Health" today, so I don't know if that's...
I can, you know, my, it was just water quality and so on.
Okay.
But, you know, I can sit in on them.
Absolutely, yeah.
I've got the other boards as well, so...
Good. And we have the monies that we budgeted $200,000 to look at water quality in Maticket and perhaps other areas. So, there'll be a, I don't know if we'll have a work group for that, but there's other opportunities, too.
And then the only other thing was Jason and I discussed the new fire station work group, and I think I'm going to stay on that. I don't think there will be very much at this point, but...
So, it's going to be you, not Rita?
Right, because I've been on it, and it was Rick and I before.
No, you and I, and not Jason?
Right.
Yes, correct.
So, it's Dawn and I.
But we can't have three selectmen on the... No, it's two.
Sorry.
Madam Chairman, sorry. There is one more group that came in that we sort of had a little bit forgotten about because it meets so infrequently, but the Bureau of Energy Management and the Massachusetts Renewable Energy Task Force invited different governmental officials from different municipalities to be on it. And it involved, they meet once every year or every other year. Lauren Sinatra, the Energy Coordinator, has been attending their meetings when they have them, and the last time this came up was in 2015. And yourself and Tobias were the board reps at that time. So, there is a meeting coming up in the middle of May. So, we do need another board member if you would like to...
Well, I'd like it if, actually, I know that that date I can't make because it's the CPC's annual forum. So, if two new people were interested, if anyone wants to do it...
It's the Board of Energy Management?
It's the Bureau...
You're looking for two?
And FALMA.
So, I recommend, I guess, two.
Two. So, if anyone wants to volunteer, it's on May 16.
You and Rita, Phil?
If I'm not doing the fire station, then I'm only on two. I'm on capital program and the PEG channel, so I don't mind. It's once a year?
Or once every two years, yeah.
Yeah, it's not even that frequent.
It takes all day, though.
They discussed issues like commercial wind energy leases offshore Rhode Island and Massachusetts, discussion of ongoing energy management initiatives, state activities related to offshore wind. It's all kinds of stuff like that. And the upcoming meeting is May 16, so I'll forward you guys the email I got from Lauren.
Yep. Jason and Rita. Jason and Rita.
Are there any potential work groups coming up that we know about for anything?
Well, not immediately, but on the horizon, maybe nearer than farther is a long, some kind of a long-term solid waste work group. And trying to think of, there may be something that comes out of your upcoming strategic planning effort.
So, I think I have room to do another one.
Do you want, yeah. I was going to say, you can take the Pulpus Harbor. If you want a third, but... You can see what comes up as well. I'm fine keeping them.
Yeah, the Pulpus is, that's like Rick's, Rick's did that for years, right?
Don't make him do it. It meets in, it's sort of infrequently, once or twice a year.
Which was this?
Pulpus Harbor.
Once or twice a year.
And it was established as a result of a license with the Nantucket Community Sailing and an access road to and from their operation on Pulpus Harbor, down Pulpus Harbor... What's it called, Pulpus Harbor Road?
It's not Pulpus Harbor Road, but it's the one of a while when it goes to 18 Mile Winnet Road.
Yeah.
And they just talk about the upcoming season and any potential issues and things like that.
There were some traffic issues in the past, and they've been working to resolve them.
But it's a requirement of the deed restriction of the Conservation Foundation, so it comes out of that.
We'll come up with similar committees. So, now...
Are you not doing that?
No, I will. I'll keep it, yeah. Keep, Jason can stay free for the new ones.
You don't need to vote on this, right? Just all in agreement on the appointments?
I think you can just do consensus, and then I'll just finalize it and send out the new list to everybody.
Great. Now, we get to schedule the 2018 Annual Town Meeting.
So, there's...
Lots of options.
There's lots of, I didn't, I may have gotten a little overboard on the options, but... So, basically, in your packet is a, just a kind of an outline about annual town meeting. We have talked internally a bit and with Chair and Vice Chair about setting the date as early as possible so that, for a couple of reasons, so that plans can be starting to be made with planning for warrant articles. And hopefully, community groups will know well ahead of time when town meeting is, so they don't have competing events. And FinCom can start working on its schedule as well. So, the town charter has a provision that the town manager shall prepare the town meeting warrant for adoption by the board pursuant to a schedule set by the board. So, I have, I don't have the actual timeline yet, but once we've set the date, I'll bring that to you shortly. So, there are some issues in 2018 with some dates. Specifically, we were looking initially at Saturday, March 31st, to keep in line with a Saturday. However, Passover is active that day and the next day, and Easter is Sunday, April 1st. So, then we looked at the following Saturday. I'm skipping around a bit in the outline, but this is how we looked at it. That would be consistent with prior years, but that's very close to the annual town election date. It would be the following Tuesday, and that's very, very difficult for the town clerk, especially if you didn't conclude the annual town meeting in the one day. So, then we went back to early in the week of April 2nd, which I think is probably the preferable time, perhaps starting on Tuesday, April 3rd. We did talk a bit about March 24th, which would be a Saturday. That sounds like it's not that much earlier than usual. It's a couple of weeks, but the planning that goes into this does mean that that's actually more of a significant change than it might sound. Even if we start things earlier in December, there's a limited amount of time to deal with town meeting things because of holiday schedules. And numbers are not accurate, as accurate, the earlier you start out, and then we get problems later with technical amendments and things because things just are not ready. So, I think our preferred date would be the week of the 2nd, perhaps the Tuesday.
I think that we should probably start it on Tuesday because of Easter being on Sunday, and many people travel for Easter.
You know, I think it's a good idea to leave, because otherwise, you don't have a business day before the town meeting, so you'd have that day on Monday for last-minute kind of things.
So, you know, and it normally doesn't go more than two nights, but even if it went to three, we're in Thursday, we're not hitting the weekend.
Right. I think that's a good idea.
I like Saturdays personally, but it's not going to work this year.
So, do you need a motion for that? I'll make a motion that it's Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018?
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the date.
Great. I'll get you the timeline in the next couple of weeks. We'll put it on the agenda.
And my only suggestion on this is to start, we, as a board, we have to set some tougher timelines on some of the subcommittees or departments and things. And if, you know, if we say it's a certain date has to be in so that we have time to deal with it and the public has time to deal with it, we should hold those dates, and we should recommend against things that come late. I just think if we don't set the right tone, you know, we end up at town meeting and it doesn't run particularly well. And we're not doing, you know, not doing the business of the town in an appropriate manner. So, I just think, you know, we may, it's, we have to think that through. And I've discussed that with Libby, and that's the plan, but I just think we saw that this year. What happens?
I think that plays into our reasoning for focusing on the annual and not having a fall this year, and getting everything set well ahead of time so everybody can plan accordingly. Of course, there could always be last-minute things, but we're going to try our best.
And then I think we would talk about the timeline. We can bring up the other topic we heard, which may be batching of motions, not waiting, not along the way, not doing them all at once, and also making sure that the FinCom motions are ready and voted on not, you know, more time than just the night before the board has to adopt them, which happened this year.
Okay. Committee reports. I will announce the annual CPC Forum, which is really a great event, which will be here on May 16. I believe it's at 4:00. Does anybody else have?
No.
Am I wrong on the time? Yes.
We have this from at 5:00 or something else, so is it only an hour?
I'm sure it's posted.
Is it that representative thing? Senator and Representative?
It's our...
Seward.
Recommend date, our neighborhood meetings with Seward.
I'm sure it's been posted. We'll just double-check.
Yep.